Good morning. The Ways and Means Committee is now called to order. I'm Danielle McCray. I'm the councilwoman for the 2nd District. I will also be cheering the committee today. In attendance, we have members, our Vice President, also a member of the committee, Sharon Green Middleton. We also have, from the 6th District, we also have Councilwoman Odette Ramos, joining us from the 14th District, as well as Councilman John Belloc, joining us from the 9th District. And also in attendance, we have staff to the committee, Marguerite Kirin, as well as representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. We have a number of bills that we're going to hear today, and I'm going to start with 24-0550 zoning conditional use retail goods establishment with alcohol beverage sales, 3601 Elm Avenue. At this time, we're going to take our committee reports for the Law Department. We have you guys listed as favorable. Do you stand by your report? Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development, we have you as favorable. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do stand by our report.
Planning Commission, we have you guys listed as favorable.
Yes, Madam Chair, we're favorable.
The BDC, we have you as favorable. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report.
Department of Transportation, we have listed as no objection.
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report.
Fire Department, we have you listed as does not oppose.
That's correct, councilperson. The Fire Department doesn't have any objections to the council bill.
Board of BMZA, we have you listed as defers to planning. Do you stand by your report?
Tyler Chanel from the Mayor's Office, representing BMZA, they stand by their report.
And last, the Parking Authority, we have the Parking Authority listed as favorable.
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report.
Okay. Colleagues, did you have any questions? We're going to place this bill within recess at this time. We're going to move on to 24-0551 zoning conditional use, conversion of single-family dwelling units to two-dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, 3115 Wallbrook Avenue. For the Law Department, we do have a report in. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair, and it's approved, however, we noticed a typo on the second page of the first reader, so that should probably be corrected. It's just the wrong bill number on the second page.
We're going to briefly go into recess. Please bear with me for one to two minutes. Thank you. We're going to reconvene 24-0551 for our Law Department. You did say that you had a typo. You guys were going to be resubmitting a report with the correct bill number.
Oh, no, it's not a typo in our bill report. It's a typo on the first reader of the bill. The first page of the bill has the correct bill number, but the second page of the first reader just has the wrong bill number.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure that we get a, thanks for clarifying. We'll make sure that we get an amendment completed for it. For DHCD, we have your report listed as favorable.
We stand behind that favorable bill report.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission, we have your report as favorable.
Yes, Madam Chair.
BDC, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report.
Okay. DOT, no objection?
No objection, thank you.
Fire Department, we have you listed as does not oppose.
Yes, Madam Chair, we don't have any objections to the council bill.
BMZA, defers to planning?
Yes.
And our Parking Authority, we have your report listed as favorable.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Colleagues, do you have any questions for this report? And is there any public testimony for this particular bill? Okay, we're going to place this bill in recess. We're going to move on to 24-0499 rezoning 2101 Gold Street. For our Law Department, it looks like the report is listed as favorable, but with comments. For 499? I believe that it's favorable as long as the facts are found and the procedure was required, the required procedure was followed. Okay, thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, your report listed as favorable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we stand behind that report.
Okay. Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, BMZA, we have you listed as none?
Defers to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Department of Transportation, no objection?
Yes, Madam Chair, no objection.
Okay. BDC, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report as favorable.
And last, Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair, favorable.
Do we have any questions from the committee? And do we have any public testimony for this bill? Can you just state your first and your last name, and also if you're with an organization prior to starting, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Alyssa Domsal with Ballard's Bar on behalf of Baltimore Urban Revitalization LLC, the applicant of this bill. This is a rezoning of 2101 Gould Street, which is the old BGNE power plant that you can see from '95, the old white building. This is a rezoning from I-2 to PC-2. Per the Law Department's report, this is a rezoning based on a change in character of the neighborhood. In 2017, when comprehensive rezoning was enacted, BGNE was operating in the building. It has since been vacant since 2019. My client purchased the building in 2021, and in 2023, 1.1 million square feet of mixed-use development came online in the Baltimore Peninsula community just west of the site. So this rezoning will allow for future adaptive reuse of the building. PC-2 is a very expansive zoning district. It really adds to the potential uses for the building while, without limiting its industrial potential. We believe that the findings of fact are adequately laid out in Planning Staff Report. We would be happy to read them into the record if the Chair would so like, but we think it's sufficiently found in Planning Commission.
Ms. Domsal, you can proceed.
Okay. All right, if there are no questions for me and the, on the findings of fact, I'll conclude. Do you want me to read into the record? Okay. One moment. Beginning with the requirements for rezoning in the land use article of the Maryland Code, the first element, consistency with the South Baltimore Gateway Plan, the PC-2 zoning district is intended for a large variety of uses, including residential, commercial, office, open space, recreation and entertainment amenities, waterfront and light industrial. This zoning would continue the existing PC-2 designation on sites to the west. The second element for the land use code, the needs of Baltimore City. While Baltimore City needs to maintain industrial zone land to maintain and attract industrial uses and jobs, the site is not ideal for industrial uses and its reuse is demonstrated by its vacancy over the past five years. Additionally, PC-2 zoning will allow for a mixed-use development that can allow light industrial. And number three, the needs of the particular neighborhood. The immediate community largely consists of development to the west and to the industry to the east. This site acts as the border between the two. With its inability to house a pier, the large historic building on site, and its proximity to the new development, the rezoning will allow it to meet the needs of the community. Moving to the findings of fact required pursuant to Article 32 of the City Code, Section 5508B2, the additional findings of fact on, first, population changes. As the development of Baltimore Peninsula and the former Lock In Slater Site continues and is occupied, there will be continued changes to the population which are not yet captured in survey data. Second, the availability of public facilities. The area is well-served by public facilities, and this is not anticipated to change, except that as Baltimore Peninsula continues to develop, infrastructure will continue to be built and refined. Number three, present and future transportation patterns. This rezoning could increase density and therefore transportation needs in the future, however, that is already anticipated with the ongoing development of Baltimore Peninsula. Number four, compatibility with existing and proposed development for the area. The rezoning and potential redevelopment of the site is consistent with the ongoing development at Baltimore Peninsula. Number five, the recommendations of the Planning Commission and the BMZA. The Planning Department has recommended approval of the rezoning request to Planning Commission. The BMZA deferred to Planning Commission. The 2015 South Baltimore Gateway Master Plan is the only applicable master plan for the site. It includes the site and its recommendation to seek mixed-use development at Baltimore Peninsula. And lastly, the additional standards under Section 5508B3 of the zoning code. Number one, existing uses of the property within the general area of the property in question. The general area includes a wide variety of uses, including a marina, a restaurant, office, cruise terminal, and industrial uses. Number two, the zoning classification of other property within the general area of the property in question. The site in question is adjacent to PC-2, MI, and I-2 uses. The I-2 uses are the recently completed BGNE replacement facility, replacing the building that's been vacant. Number three, the suitability of the property in question for the uses permitted under its existing zoning classification. The property is suitable for industrial uses, as well as a variety of other mixed uses. And lastly, number four, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including changes, if any, that have taken place since the property in question was placed in its present zoning classification. The area to the west has undergone a substantial change due to the development of Baltimore Peninsula. This trend is anticipated to continue. That concludes the findings of fact. If there are no further questions for me, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank her for reading those findings. We know that everyone is interested in what's progressing in the Baltimore Peninsula, and it's good to have those findings as a matter of record publicly. Thanks.
Thank you both. We have been joined by Councilman Robert Stokes of the 12th District. So we're going to place this particular hearing within recess as well, and be moving on to 24- and thank you, that's going to conclude, will that conclude the public testimony with that? We're going to move on to 24-0500 zoning Point Covington area of special signage control amendment. And we're going to start with the Law Department. We have your report as favorable. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. DHCD, we have your report listed as favorable. Do you stand by your report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Planning Commission, have you listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. BMZA, we have it as defers to planning. Do you stand by that report?
Yes.
Department of Transportation, listed as no objection?
Yes, Madam Chair, no objection.
Okay. BDC, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And Parking Authority of Baltimore City? No report? Or none? Do we have any questions, colleagues, regarding this bill? Okay. Is there any public testimony for this bill?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Alyssa Domsal with Ballard's Bar on behalf of, I suppose, the applicant in this case. This is a sort of a cleanup bill to the section of the zoning code pertaining to area special sign control. As written, the code says that the Port Covington area of special sign control tracks to the PC zoning district as of 2017, as of the effective date of Transformed Baltimore. And we found over time that that was really creating some administrative hassle for every rezoning. We were also having to do a one-off amendment to the boundaries of the area of special sign control. So what this bill does is remove that 2017 date so that the boundaries of the Port Covington area of special sign control automatically track to the limits of the PC, PC-1, PC-2, PC-3, and PC-4 zoning districts. And that's it for me. If there are no questions from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. That's going to conclude public testimony, and we're going to recess that particular bill and move on to 24-0519 Point Covington. Community Benefits District and Management Authority renewal through June 30th, 2028. We have the Law Department's report as favorable. Do you stand by that report?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Finance, we have you listed as does not oppose?
Correct, Madam Chair.
City Administrator's Office, listed as favorable?
No, I don't believe we submitted a report for that, so it'd be without recommendation.
DHCD, listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand behind our report.
Planning Commission, listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
BDC, listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair, we stand by our report.
Department of Transportation, no objection?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Public Works, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair, favorable.
Okay, and for the Board of Estimates, we have this listed to be submitted. Okay. Any questions from our colleagues? Any public testimony on this bill? Okay, we're going to recess this bill. We're going to move on to 24-0546 rezoning 6001 Maravia Park Drive. And for this particular, for this particular bill, we do have the agency reports that are on file. I'm the sponsor of this bill. We are going to, I have additional concerns regarding the bill, so we're going to be recessing this particular bill, and it will be rescheduled in the future. We're going to move on to 24-0548 zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, Variance 2035 McCullough Street. Law Department, we have your report listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
BDC, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Transportation, no objection?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Fire Department does not oppose?
Yes, Madam Chair.
BMZA, defers to planning?
Yes.
Parking Authority of Baltimore, Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any questions? Is there any public testimony for this particular bill? Okay, we're going to recess this bill and move on to 24-0539, city streets renaming Cromwell Street to Vision Street. And at this particular time, for the Law Department, would you be able to explain your report, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Elena DePietra for the Baltimore City Law Department. Happy to explain our report. So the proposal is that the Cromwell Street renamed Vision Street. There are parameters in the transportation or the streets article of the code that require that certain criteria be met for a street renaming, and they include those criteria are, it can't be the same as another street in the city. It can't be the name of a person, a living person. It can't be the same name as a business, and it must include the entire street. In addition to that, there's a requirement that both Transportation and CHAP submit reports. If without a CHAP report, the bill cannot get out of committee. So of those criteria, the, this bill failed to, because there are many businesses with the name Vision in it, so given the broadness of the law, that would be a violation of the law, lack of compliance with the criteria. It doesn't have the name of a person that we know of, but it does not name the entire street. So there's two of the four criteria not satisfied, so the renaming cannot proceed.
We're going to, thank you.
Sure.
We are going to get through the remainder of the agency reports on this particular bill. Department of Planning, we did have you listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights, defers to planning?
Yes, Madam Chair.
BDC, we had it listed as no objection?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. For this particular bill, colleagues, did you have any questions? And was there any public testimony for this particular bill?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Alyssa Domsal with Ballard's Bar on behalf of BUR, the applicant. We would request of the committee defer the bill to a future hearing so that we can address the Law Department's points. I would want to just make one note that certainly the intention is to rename the entirety of Cromwell Street, and if there's some question that we can address with the Law Department about how the bill is drafted such that there, that is giving the impression that is not renaming the entire street, it is intended to do so. But in any event, we would like the opportunity to address the remaining points at a future hearing. Thank you.
Okay, so that's going to conclude public testimony. This bill will be rescheduled within the future. We are going to move on to Council Bill 23-0392, sale of property, a portion of Boston Street. I have the Law Department's report as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Housing and Community Development, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Finance, not opposed?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Department of Planning, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Real Estate, we have listed as no objection? Okay. Office of, Office of Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement, defers to DHCD?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, we've been joined by Councilman Yitschis Schleifer. Did we have any committee questions? Okay, is there any, are there any members of the public who would like to testify? Okay, is there a motion to vote on Bill 23-0392? Okay, moved by Vice President Middleton, and second by Councilman Stokes. Costello is absent, excused. Burnett is absent. Dorsey is absent. McCray, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes? Okay, this bill will be moving to second reader at the next council meeting. We're going to be moving on to Council Bill 24-0538, sale of property, 411 East Old Cold Spring Lane. And for our agency reports, for the Law Department, we have you listed as favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Finance?
We do not oppose this bill, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Department of Planning, favorable?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Department of Real Estate? Office of Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement?
Office of Equity and Civil Rights, Karan Watkins, interim director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We have a favorable report, and we stand by our report. We just, we have no issue with the sale, but spoke to the plan, the future plans for the building and the potential inequities that could arise out of that.
Okay. Colleagues, do we have any questions? Is there any public testimony for this particular bill? Okay. Is there a motion to move the bill? Stokes, motion, motion by Stokes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Costello absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, yes. Middleton, yes?
Yes.
I had to pause myself, I'm sorry. Middleton?
Yes.
Thank you. Schleifer? Stokes? Thanks, y'all. Okay, so this bill is going to be, this bill is going to move to second reader, be heard at our next city council meeting. We are going to move into recalling a few bills today. And we'll be starting with, excuse me, reconvening. We're going to be reconvening 24-0550 zoning conditional use retail goods establishment with alcohol beverage sales, 3601 Elm Avenue. Is there a motion to move this bill? Is there a motion to move the bill? Okay. Motion by Stokes, is there? And I apologize, before we vote, was there anyone here that would like to testify from the public? Okay, no. Okay. So the motion on the floor by Stokes, was there a second? Okay, second by Middleton. Costello absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Stokes? Okay, this bill moves to second reader for our next city council meeting. We are going to be reconvening 24-0551 zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two-dwelling unit in the R7 zoning district, 3115 Wallbrook Avenue. Colleagues, there's going to, there was a, there's going to be a technical amendment, likely a floor amendment for this on, at our next council meeting regarding a typo with the section just heads up, but is there a motion to move this bill? Okay, so motion by Stokes, second by Middleton. Costello is absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer? Stokes? Okay, this bill will be, will be heard for second reading at the next city council meeting. We are going to move on to 24-0499 rezoning 2101 Gold Street. Is there a motion to move this bill? Motion by Stokes, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Costello absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer? Okay, so, thank you. Back to the vote. Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Stokes? Okay, so this vote is going to move to second reader. Okay, so this vote is going to move to second reader at our next city council meeting. And we're going to go to 24-0500 zoning Port Covington area special signage control amendment. And is there a motion to move? Okay. Motion by Stokes, is there a second? Okay, second by Middleton. Costello absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, is it, yes? Middleton? Schleifer? Stokes? Thank you. This bill is going to move to second reader at our next city council meeting. 24-0519 Port Covington, Community Benefits District and Management Authority renewal through June 30th, 2028. Is there a motion to move the bill? Motion by Stokes, is there a second? Second by Middleton. Costello absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, yes? Middleton? Schleifer? Stokes? We'll be moving to second reader on this bill at our next city council meeting. Moving on to 24-0548, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district. Is there a motion to move this bill? Motion by Stokes, is there a second? Costello absent. Burnett absent. Dorsey absent. McCray, yes? Middleton? Schleifer? Stokes? Okay. This bill is going to move to second reader at our next city council meeting. Okay, everyone, thanks so much for joining today and also for your patience. This committee hearing is in recess.